Okay, it is 7:30, and so I will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, November 19th, 2008. I'd ask that you please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, in what is obviously regarded throughout our country as Thanksgiving week, we have much in Batavia to be ever thankful for. Particularly, we have the human power that does so many kind deeds and does so many great services in support of those less fortunate themselves. And as obvious tonight by the presence of those from the Batavia Food Pantry and from the Batavia Clothes Closet and from Access Toys, we just have a number of organizations that in their own individual and special ways make this a very friendly and wondrous place for people of all means and all relations and nationalities and understandings that they all can come together and live in a community that shows it really cares. And how special that is and how thankful Batavia must be for living in a community where we send such a phenomenal message of love and understanding in a world that is very troubled. Tonight, we also want to remember all those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and I just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of these men and women as they go about their vital mission in defense of our liberties. As always, we ask for understanding and vision and direction as the City Council acts on the various items of business before us, knowing that each and every one of us is here to act in the best thoughts of our minds and hearts to do what is best for Batavia. As always, we ask for thankfulness for the great town that we live in and for the great spirit that really makes Batavia a very wondrous place for so many people to live and raise their families. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Alderman Chancet, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Congratulations to the line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chancet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien. Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen elected aldermen are present in calendar for this evening's meetings. We obviously have the necessary qualm to conduct business. I might note, I've been informed that Alderman O'Brien has called. He's running a little bit late. I think he may be stuck in some traffic. I just returned from a situation over in Oakbrook. It was the second time today I've been over there for intergovernmental meetings. I was there this morning. I was just there now before I came here, and I will tell you that the traffic on 88 between Oakbrook and Batavia was backed up. So it's not, it was a great morning to ride in, but it's not been a great morning to ride out. So hopefully Alderman O'Brien will make it here soon. We will move then to the item number four, and that is the reminder that we ask all members of the council and those from the audience who are going to address the council that they please use the microphone for the benefit of BATV. As all of you know, every one of these meetings is broadcast and recorded and featured on Batavia Access TV, and we just have had some people concerned sometimes that some of us, including myself, don't always speak into the mic as directly as we should, and it's hard for some people to hear. So we ask that everybody try to remember to speak into the mic. Moving to that, item number five, there are items to be moved, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Atack is Chairman of Governmental Services Committee. Do you have anything?
I do not have anything this evening.
Anybody else in the council? Okay, moving then to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Atack, would you present this, please?
Yes. The consent agenda reads as follows. Accept and place on file Plan Commission Minutes for October 17th, 2018. Building Report, October 2018. 2017 Fire and Police Pension Municipal Compliance Reports. 2018 Fire and Police Tax Levy Requests. Approvals, November 16th, 2018. Payroll in the amount of $840,544.84. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $5,272,936.64. City Council Minutes for November 5th, 2018. Ordinance 18-70, amending the official zoning map of the City of Batavia for 1,500 West Wilson Street, 137 Feast Drive, and 1227 Bradford Circle, City of Batavia. Applicant. Ordinance 17-71, amending the zoning quote text for uses in the CC District. Ordinance 18-73, terminating special service area number 57 for Batavia Main Street. Ordinance 18-67, annexing 503 McKinley Street. Resolution 18-123-R, appointing Rahat Bari as alternate board member to NIPA. Resolution 18-110-R, a resolution authorizing the Finance Director to sign IEPA loan documents. Resolution 18-122-R, authorizing purchase of a Ford F-150 pickup for Community Development Department not to exceed $25,355. I move that we approve the consent agendas presented.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the consent agendas presented. Any discussion? Chair, no discussion. The clerk, please call the roll.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chancet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Just as a matter of explanation for those in the audience who are not regular members of the City Council, what we have just done with the consent agenda is we've consolidated about 45 minutes of time into one motion and one action, and this was only done after each one of these items is thoroughly discussed at our committee meeting, and we find that there's no objectors, nobody's concerned, nobody's objecting, nobody's had any questions about it. So we've kind of figured out which are the ones that we're going to be able to fly under the radar here real quick, and we put those together as the consent agenda, and it's a time saver for allowing for other more vital items to be discussed on the agenda if that is necessary. So we didn't cut any corners here, other than we'd already had the discussions about them, there was no issue, and so we just pile all those onto one motion instead of voting 10 or 20 times on all the various items that would have been, had to have been voted on, and we've taken each one of those separately. And we're, we find that we're very common in doing this. Most other city governments in the area do a similar exercise to kind of consolidate business a lot. Okay, moving then to item number seven, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do I have anybody that wants to address the City Council tonight for something that's not on the agenda? All right, moving then to item number eight, which is the Main Street Minute.
Good evening, esteemed City Council, Mr. Mayor, City staff, and of course, everybody watching. For those of you I do not know, my name is Patrick James Moynihan, and I am honored to be the President for the third year in a row of Batavia Main Street. You are unfortunately having to deal with me tonight instead of our awesome Executive Director, Chris Faber. He had a conflict of schedule, and it was my opportunity and honor to be here in his replacement. So happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Before we get into Main Street focus, I do want to take a moment separately as a citizen of Batavia to say thank you to each and every single one of you in this room for your efforts with Home Rule. I'll tell you what, this was an awesome thing to see over 9,000 people step up and put their vote of support in your leadership, in the authenticity and the integrity that you bring to your leadership here for this city. Not only is it an amazing thing for each of us to be a part of that and to be included in it, and I know you all have a challenging position you had to take in that, but it's an honor to be able to step up as a citizen, to serve with you, to be able, to be able to be a voice, and to see so many people get plugged in. Congratulations, thank you for your efforts, and it's a huge win and success for our city. Moving forward though, getting focused on Main Street. We just went through our annual Board Retreat. We took a moment as a group to take a look at current issues, where we are, what 2019's outlook happens to be, and to begin to celebrate some of the success of 2018. This has been an awesome year, and certainly we've had our challenges, but with partnership with the city and so many other organizations, I think Main Street has continued to offer an opportunity to improve our downtown, identify Batavia's center. Our downtown is the real heart of the community and improve what we do all collectively together. Thank you for your partnership this year. We've got a few small tweaks that we're making. We are definitely, and this has been an ongoing part of my conversation in the President's report, we are making a shift. Obviously, Main Street is an active component of the community life. Here, we are very active with events, with promotions, and other organizational entities, but we do see ourselves as an economic engine as well, and it's time that we really do continue to grow up as an organization, and that's in partnership with you, the city, with our chamber, and many others that I think are going to be coming forward in the near months and years here to take a look at how do we shift our energy towards economic development. In our language, in Main Street language, that's economic vitality. You'll be hearing more about that, and there's one element in particular which we'll talk about today. One of the ways that we're going to try to move forward right now, coming up this week, we've got happy Thanksgiving happening for everyone. Of course, we all go out, try to get those awesome deals on Black Friday, but I will ask you and implore you on Small Business Saturday to step up big, show up for your local businesses, right? This is an opportunity where Main Street spends dollars trying to invest into our local economy, trying to amplify the energy, and we have a really awesome event going on this year. So we have over 22 businesses that are participating in a raffle for Small Business Saturday. Again, we've spent some dollars so far, and we intend to do so further through the week on social media promoting our small business energy in downtown. Of these 22 businesses, we have retail, restaurant, and some salons that have decided to step up with us. And so the scoop is this, if you go down and spend a few dollars in these businesses that are participating, you'll be entered in a raffle. There's also an opportunity to enter that raffle if you bring a brand new unwrapped gift that will be donated to the Batavia Access. Toy drive, what will happen then is you will, you will have an opportunity for a big win. Now, I believe, if I recall off the top of my head, now please don't quote me on the detail, I believe this is $250 gift certificate for your use at one of these 22 locations. So be free to check out downtownbatavia.org, find out more about, excuse me, dot com, find out more about the raffle, as well as stay abreast of what's happening in Batavia Main Street on Facebook. I do want to then mention, as I said, we're making a shift in our energy and our focus as to how we step up with economic vitality in our community. One of those ways is we've decided, and it was with board vote, to step up for a local business. And Paula, Paula Mueller, one of our awesome former alderwomen, and her team are going to be coming up to speak in one moment. Batavia Main Street has moved out of our existing office space, and we've moved into the historic building, the Newton House, up on the avenue. We found it important to create an opportunity to see an amazing leader and a new business happen. So if I can, I'd like to introduce Paula, someone I think many of you know, and her awesome new business, Paula's Couture Consignment.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Boy, this podium scares me. So we took over 4 1/2 West Wilson. We're right down under Real Pro in kind of a quirky little spot, but we're going to do women's consignment, upscale consignment. We thought it would be fun to play a little game with all of you tonight, so I have two lovely models here tonight, and I'm going to ask them to do a quick spin past you, and then we're going to see if anyone can guess what retail price might be and what it might be at a consignment shop. So this is Marilyn, and she's wearing a Tracy Reese dress. I'm sure all of you gentlemen know this name.
Of course. Absolutely.
And then Lillian, and she's wearing a beautiful Kate Spade jacket, both of which are found at my store. Any good guesses on what dress might cost? Retail? No one's going to take a stab?
You should know better than anyone, Paula. You're in a room with a bunch of politicians.
Oh, come on, this sounded like a lot of fun to put you all on the spot tonight. Any guesses, Marty?
I'll guess, 400 bucks retail.
It's a, that's a little high. It's actually about $200 retail. So what would you find it for at Paula's Consignment?
Probably 75, or 100.
How about 2,250? Who doesn't want their wife shopping here?
Yeah.
And then the Kate Spade jacket? Any guesses?
That's an expensive one.
Mm-hmm. Got a guess?
I'd say 600.
It's about, it's about 250.
Really?
Yeah, 250 to 300. And at Paula's Consignment? Any guesses?
2,250.
Not quite that good. We're going to go 69 on that one.
Nice.
So, but you can find both of those items at my store. We have Paula's In Batavia for Instagram and Facebook, and my new phone number is 630-425-3196. Did I miss anything, Mayor?
Well, do you have a phone number and an email address that people can?
I do. Paula'sInBatavia is my email, at gmail dot com, and then 630-425-3196.
Let me just say, on behalf of the City Council, it was kind of a sad night here when we learned that because of personal reasons you were going to be leaving the City Council before your term had expired. Everybody was very sorry to see you go, but I think tonight we're turning that around, and we're all delighted to see that you're coming back to Batavia with all your energy and talents and vision and putting it into a retail business on Wilson Street, and you're joining a number of other new retail businesses that are surfacing on Wilson Street. And so I think you're going to make downtown Batavia shine, and we're very pleased and honored to have you kind of return home to where you, from whence you came, so to speak. And you really, I think, bought something that's hopefully going to attract quite a bit of interest.
Thank you.
So, thanks for doing it.
Story looks really cute. Does not look like Main Street anymore.
It does look cute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, everybody, very much. We're super grateful for the partnership. Happy Thanksgiving, and how about seeing downtown grow with an amazing leader, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next thing is going to be a presentation about the Batavia Food Pantry, and Gary Holm, I'll let you start.
Really, tonight is about the city showing its appreciation for the food pantry. I've got a couple of things I want to talk about, but before I start, I had asked the Mayor if he could maybe just give some background to refresh the community's memory as to how the food pantry came to be down there.
Well, as I remember, it was Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry, and it really kind of got its start in the church community to some degree, where the churches kind of came together in maybe late 1970s or early 1980s. And as I remember, one of the very first places it was, was in the buildings the city had bought here, and there was another building, some of you may remember, that was right next door, that was a one-story building that had a bad roof leaking problem. And so the late Glenn Haynes, who had been an alderman, was very interested and promotive of this organization, and he talked then Mayor Robert Brown into allowing the food pantry to have a place next door here for a while. And they were there for quite a while, but then I think things kind of changed around, and there was some concerns about the health standards in the building next door because the roof was leaking and other things were happening over there that weren't real customer-friendly. So they ended up moving out, and I believe maybe they went to one of the churches for a while, and then they moved around town, and then we had the opportunity down at the water treatment plant, a wastewater treatment plant, to have a vacant building that we had acquired. And then as one thing led to another, we had some Dennis Kintop and a couple of people step forward, and they built an addition onto that building, and then we went from a both a food pantry to also a clothes closet, when we've certainly, I think, over the last few years, done a lot of good and a lot of support and a lot of help for people in our town who truly needed it. And I, I think that the volunteers that are sitting at the back of the room are just shining examples and classic representation of the quality of the good citizen that we have living in this town, and the caring mind and the willingness to step forward for basically no pay to do a job that really, you know, makes a difference in the lives of so many people. And when you get near holidays like we're having this week or the coming holidays over the end of the year, you know, those are the days when an organization like the food pantry really can make a difference in the lives of homes and families, and so Batavia just has a real special thing going for it. And I would note that, you know, because of my roles I have in the region as Chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning and Council of Mayors, I know many of the mayors in the Chicagoland area, and a very common question I get is, how does you, how do you run that food pantry out there, and how do you do that toy drive? Because people hear about this, and I say, well, it's because we have the great spirit of togetherness and willing and giving that we have in Batavia, and this is what really makes it all the difference, because it's really, the secret to it is found in the hearts and the good minds of the people that are doing it. And so we are, I think, most fortunate and blessed to have in this town people like we have in this room tonight, who have really made this organization grow and shine, and, you know, we continue to have conversations about trying to help them further expand beyond what they are right now, and hopefully something will come of that in the days ahead. So Gary, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. And for the past 12, 18 months, the city hasn't made it easy for them. We've been undoing our rebuilding our wastewater treatment plant, as you all know, and it's right next to the food pantry. So we've created dust, and we've created dirt, and we've created noise, and we've created gravel that their clients have to literally sometimes, you know, hobble across because there wasn't, wasn't any paved path. We've cut off their deliveries, we've cut off their utilities. Almost any obstacle, we've basically thrown in their way. They've been nothing but gracious, and I wanted to acknowledge the efforts of Jerry Ruth, who's sitting behind the post, I can't see him, Dan Gillespie, they are both from Trotter and Associates, our consultants, who are overseeing the wastewater project on our behalf, Byron Richardson, our wastewater superintendent. All three of those gentlemen regularly communicated with Betsy Zinser, the Director of the Food Pantry, to try and keep her up to speed, or she was, she was told right from the start that if there's ever an issue that comes up, that she can give us a call. So I know there's been good communication back and forth from the start. Certainly some days of hand wringing and frustration, but now, knock onward, we're getting to the end. And at that point, I would like to invite up Betsy, and because we are getting to the end, the city wanted to, again, thank you to the food pantry tonight for putting up with us, but then also to acknowledge them in this day of Thanksgiving week, and I'll probably turn that back over to the Mayor.
Somebody's got to come up here, because I got something to give you. Well, as Gary has already said, on behalf of the city of Batavia, we would like to make a donation to the Interfaith Food Pantry in appreciation for your understanding and working with us in some difficult times as we improve the future of wastewater treatment in Batavia for the next 100 years, because as I tell people, that building that we've built down there and the size of it, it's meant to be there for 100 years, and so the brick and the air and everything else is all be there to show what this community is going to be like and be like for many years to come. And hopefully, 100 years from now, we'll still be talking about the good work being done by the Batavia Food Pantry, and certainly you guys are creating a legacy that certainly speaks to what an organization like yours can do and what you do, and really makes the difference in a positive way for so many families in our town. So on behalf of the citizens of Batavia, I make you this presentation.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. On behalf of the pantry, we are so grateful for your support throughout the years, including the use of the building. So with grateful and humble hearts, thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Hang on, our video. People, people.
Yep. And the food pantry, go ahead. Betsy, you want to introduce this, and you can just press play?
All right. So this is a video, and a number of these people back here are in this video, and it just tells a little bit about what we do and why we do it, and encourages people to support us, both in the coming holidays and at any time. Okay, so I just click.
Welcome to the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry and Clothes Closet.
Why should you support the food pantry? Because together, we can change the lives of many Batavians in big and small ways.
It's the personal care items for the elderly lady who sits next to you at church.
It's cleaning supplies for the homeless man who just got an apartment after many months.
It's clothing for a family in your son's third grade class.
It's groceries for your neighbor who works two jobs and still needs help filling in the gaps.
It's home delivery for those physically unable to visit the pantry.
It's peace of mind knowing others care. For your $43 donation, a local family can receive the monthly support they need. Since 1981, our community has given funds, food, and clothing to care for our neighbors. Please support our work with your donation on Giving Tuesday or any day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone back there, volunteers. So thank you.
Okay, moving then to item number 10 on our agenda, which is Resolution 18-120-R, authorizing execution of a construction engineering services agreement for federal participation in the amount of $528,376.43 for the Main Street Reconstruction Phase III Construction Services with BLA Incorporated.
Who's got that? I do, Your Honor. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you. This is part of the Main Street Reconstruction Project for our long-term capital improvement plan for the city. We have been awarded a $2.5 million federal funding grant through the Kane Kendall Council of Mayors for the reconstruction of Main Street between Water Street and Van Orwick. Additionally, the city has a commitment of $483,000 from the state of Illinois to modernize the traffic signal at Main Street and Batavia Avenue. That will include removing the multiple level sidewalk curb setup that's at that corner. The project consists of reconstruction of the entire roadway between those two points. This will be two 13-foot lanes and a seven-foot parking lane on the north side between Van Orwick and Batavia Avenue. The parking lane moves to the south side of the road between Batavia Avenue and Water Street. The project includes reconstruction of the Batavia Avenue intersection and raising the proposed grade to the 88 grading on the northwest corner of the intersection, and a new signal will also be designed and installed at that intersection. The combined sewer will be separated along with new storm sewer being constructed throughout the project limits. Subs at the side streets will be provided for future tie-ins. Existing sewers will also be, remain as combination sewer in line throughout the project. Replacement of the water main throughout the project limit is also planned. This is for the next phase, for Phase III Engineering. The contract is for an amount of $528,000. Does anybody have any questions? Now, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 18-120-R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Callahan for the approval of Resolution 18-120-R. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Alderman Brown.
I just want to make mention, Alan did a nice job of presenting this, but I want to make mention that with some of the flooding that we've had going on over in the west side over there, particularly around Blaine Street, over the last few years or over the last 10, 12 years, we have started some work in that area with what we did this last, this current year, and this process that we're going through here with Main Street is not only going to rebuild Main Street from what you would see today, but it's also another step in, as Alan mentioned, the separation of the sanitary and the, and the stormwater in order to move forward further yet into correcting all the flooding issues that we could possibly have over there again. So it's a good step in the future.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Clerk call the roll, please.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chancet.
Resolution 18-120-R is approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Let the record reflect that Alderman O'Brien has entered the proceedings too. Okay, moving to item number 11, which is Resolution 18-121-R, authorizing execution of a local public agency agreement for federal participation with the Illinois Department of Transportation for Main Street Reconstruction. Alderman Wolf?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is another step in that process for the Main Street Reconstruction. This is the local agency agreement for that, and just to update everybody on construction schedules that'll be going along with this, the letting for this project should be done by IDOT in March of 2019, which means that the anticipated start for this will hopefully[1740.73] start for this will hopefully be in May of 2019. So we get this under construction and retain the grants money that we have. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Tom.
Alderman Salvati?
That was, didn't he mention that they're going to try and have it done by the end of 19? That would be the plan, is to try to get it in and get it done by the end of November, about this time next year.
The new federal rule that we are operating on is we've got three federal grants out there and we just have to have them all under construction by October of 2020. If we don't, we, the money comes off the table. So that's what we have to run by here.
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 18-121-R, authorizing execution of the local agency agreement for federal participation for the Main Street Reconstruction Project.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Callahan for the approval of Resolution 18-121-R. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mullay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atak.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Motion's approved. 14 yes, no no's, none absent. Moving to item number 12, which is Ordinance 18-65, an ordinance authorizing the city of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage Counties, Illinois to issue a promissory note in the aggregate amount, principal amount not to exceed $2,350,000 in evidence of loans issued pursuant with the Illinois Pollution Control Loan Act program. Alderman Wolf, Alderman Chantet, do you have this one?
Yeah, I do. So this is for work in Ward One to complete work in Area Three for sewer separation. As part of the consent agenda, we already approved authorizing Peggy to sign these loan documents. She did mention as part of her presentation that it could be 2019, 2020 before all of the work is completed because we need to get the loan in as well. And this passed 11 to zero out of committee last week. So if there are no other questions, Gary is here. If anyone does have any, otherwise I would make a motion to approve Ordinance 1865, authorizing Batavia to issue a promissory note for the work.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Ordinance 18-65. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Mullay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atak.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Ordinance 18-65 is approved. 14 yes, no no's, none absent. Moving then to 13, the
Administrator's report. Laura?
I get lucky, number 13 tonight, I guess. So this year's weather has wreaked havoc with our plan for picking up leaves between them, all falling at once and then having a nice snow and freeze. But because the crews have been out there working so hard, we're only two days behind. So on Monday and Tuesday of this week, they're going to try to complete the work that's yet unfinished on the west side before they begin their final two pickups, which then, so Wednesday, Thursday, and Wednesday of this week, I should say, and resuming on Friday, they'll be picking up on the east side. And then next week, beginning on November 26th, hopefully they'll be able to shift back over and do the final pickup on the west side. So thanks, everyone out there who's, who's bearing with it. And we will get to all of those leaves. Just wanted to let you know that we have a committee of the whole meeting tomorrow night. And among other topics on the agenda, we hope that we'll be able to resolve our 2019 budget. So we'll be having some important discussions about that. So anyone who would like to participate in the, in the discussion, they should come to that meeting at 7:00 PM and they can also watch on BATV. I just wanted to mention that we had a few hiccups with our BATV recordings for the last couple of meetings. There was some, we did not inform BATV about the special meeting that was on Thursday, November 8th. And so we had an audio recording that we made available for that meeting. And then on the 13th, BATV has been having some problems with, they can post them to YouTube, but them showing up on their website, they're experiencing some delay with that and they are troubleshooting that. But both of the recordings for those meetings are available and BATV will be recording and broadcasting the meeting tomorrow evening. Also, this week, the Plan Commission meeting has been canceled for November 21st at 7:00 PM. We have received the revised plans and information for Winding Creek, that is the old land by our farm property located behind Sam's Club. So staff is reviewing those documents internally and will have an internal development review meeting on December 6th. And the project should be scheduled for the Plan Commission recommendation on December 12th. From the Human Resources Department, we received the results from health evaluations. We do biometric screening and health evaluations for employees every year. This year, we increased our participation rate by 7% for those employees that we tested. We show an estimated cost avoidance of $1.84. This means that for every $1 that the city is investing in doing this biometric screening, it is, we're seeing a $1.84 cost avoidance because employees are catching matter, health matters sooner and are able to have those conversations with their doctors and seek treatment before things become critical. So it's a very good investment, but it's also a very good incentive for employees to have conversations with their doctor about health issues. Also, the, we have initiated a wellness committee. The wellness committee has had a couple of meetings and we believe this will have a big effect on how we structure our health benefits in the future, as well as providing opportunities and incentives for employees to take better, better care of themselves and avail themselves and become more active and, and healthy. Other projects in public works are the Cast in Place Sewer Linings Project is underway. And also, just a legend you, IDOT has given their preliminary approval to proceed forward with an alternate design of the Main Street and Batavia Avenue intersection to eliminate what was, where we have the double curbs there at the northwest corner. So it should make it a much easier intersection to traverse. Also, phone, gas, and cable companies have begun utility relocations at Deer Path and Main in anticipation of the project to make that a signalized intersection. We're happy to see that happen. It's a site where quite a few accidents have occurred and the type of accidents that have occurred have been quite severe. So we're really looking forward to improving the safety of that intersection. That's all I have, other than to remind people that we have a tremendous amount of organizations within our community who are worthy of your dollars on Giving Tuesday. The Tuesday after Black Friday is Giving Tuesday, when many people take the opportunity to give to organizations of their choice who help others in our community. So I just encourage everybody who's listening to participate in Giving Tuesday because it's such a Batavia sort of thing to do. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions?
Alderman Callahan.
Regarding the delay in the leaf, there's no impact to the citywide brush pickup for next week?
Right.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports, community development, Alderman Brown?
Just a couple of meetings to announce, Your Honor. The, as Laura mentioned, the committee of the whole meeting is tomorrow evening. That starts at 7:00 PM. Couple items that fall under the community development guidelines are Resolution 18125-R and 18126-R, which are for consideration for awarding the downtown improvement grant and a facade improvement grant to Batavia Platform Properties. Plan Commission for this coming Wednesday is canceled and historic preservation is scheduled for Monday, November 26th at 5:30 PM. That's all I have.
Okay. Government services, Alderman Atak?
On November 27th, as Laura suggested, we'll continue to talk about the budget and the tax levies. And that's all that government services has going for the rest of the month.
Okay. City services, Alderman Wolf?
We have one thing on the agenda for tomorrow night's council meeting. That is surplus police department vehicles.
Okay. And public utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Your Honor, tomorrow night, we will have Trotter and Associates just give us a monthly update on the wastewater treatment facility construction.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right. We have other business from the council? All right, it's my turn. Number one, obviously, I just want to publicly go on record as expressing how proud and appreciative I think all of us should be of the Batavia High School football program and as far as they got in the state running. You can't win it every year, but it seems like we do it every other year, but we're, I guess this was our off year, but we certainly have nothing to be apologetic about. It was a great season, undefeated till the very last. And if it's all right with the council, I was going to talk with Coach Piran about inviting the team down sometime in the next few meetings and we'll get us together a certificate of appreciation, which we'd give them all. And also, we also want to do that for the girls cross-country team who went to the state meet and won several phases of it. So we've got some, we'll be bringing in the students. And we're fortunate because on the council, we have the voice of the Batavia Bulldogs right here. So he knows how to pronounce all these names of all these players. And needless to say, I certainly don't want to try to butcher my way through some of them, so.
It was interesting, the last few playoff games, when we had other people that were calling the names and the comments that I really probably shouldn't show anybody off my phone from what, what came to Dave and I while we were sitting at games when we couldn't broadcast.
Well, I think you got rave reviews from the folks in the home here.
It was really nice to hear.
How badly they missed you all and how great a job you do and what a dynamic duo we have there on the voice of the Batavia High School sports program. So you really made a-
Got a game to go to tonight.
What?
They're playing right now.
Oh, so I got to get this over so you can get out there.
Yeah. Just about halftime right now, they're beating Hayland. It's working to nothing at the quarter.
Okay, well, I want to let you know I'm planning to do that. I just also would like to invite everybody to come down Sunday night for Santa Claus coming to town. And we're going to have a brief concert by the Batavia Community Band. And the big event is going to be with the help of our, our Batavia Public Works Department. We're going to light the annual Christmas tree lighting out here, the tree on the Riverwalk. And that all kicks in about 5:15 on Sunday night, rain or shine. So if you've got any grandchildren or children or neighbors or just want to come down and join the club, it's a great group of people walking around here. And then following that, a bunch of the city department heads and myself go over to the basement of the Depot Museum and we read Christmas stories, one at a time. And so we get quite a few folks coming over there with kids to do this. So we've, that's really become quite a fashionable thing that a bunch of us do. And so my wife and I always kind of climax the whole thing by reading. It's the night before Christmas. And my wife, in her school teacher background, she can be quite dramatic or theatrical or whatever you want to call it. And it's quite a show. So I also just want to mention that for those who heard some of this conversation tonight, the city of Batavia has been very fortunate to obtain federal support. We've got over $5 million in federal road grants given to us, which will include the resurfacing of South Prairie Street from just south of Wilson down to Pine. It'll include the one we just talked about here on Main Street from Water out to Van Orwick. And the third one is, in cooperation with the Kane County Highway Department, we got a federal grant to stoplight and enhance the safety issues at Deer Path Road and Main Street. And the only condition with all that is, is we got to have all three of those things under construction by no later than October of 2020, or we lose the money. So I'm thinking our staff has everything well in hand and that is moving forward. A problem area that we continue to have in town and one that we are trying to address, and I've been to several meetings the last couple of weeks with CMAP Council of Mayors and Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, I've been, I think I've been out of town four times here in the last three weeks. And one of the things I've been able to do is do a little lobbying about the, the problem we have up at the intersection of North Batavia Avenue and Fabian Parkway at the traffic signal. It's become quite an accident generator, some very heavily duty bad accidents. And so we've, I know that the county has got in, in motion a design, some engineering design on changing that intersection. And it probably is going to take further efforts on our parts to get the Illinois Department of Transportation. They're not objecting, they're just trying to better understand it. And they think they will, once we get this engineering done of kind of reconfiguring. There may be a thing, though, that the Kane County may have to go into the Fabian Parkway Bridge and change a few things around there, which could be a little bit pricey to get it done because that if you go out there and look at it, the, the two, the Fabian Parkway from the west and the bridge coming over from the east aren't in a straight line. And they kind of collide with each other in a kind of a kiddy wampus fashion, right in the middle of that intersection, which seems to be the reason for all this bad traffic issue that we're facing. So they're, they're looking at maybe changing that around. And certainly one of the things that may have to come into play is our old friends and discussion up at Campana. We may have to take about 60 feet of that north side of that street there at some point in time, just to kind of get a better angle on things as it goes forward there. So we'll see how that all flushes out, but things are in motion there. And the last thing I'd like to report is, is that, I don't know if I've mentioned this, you know, sometimes things leave the city and then they come back. And the Batavia Shriners Organization has contacted the fire department and has asked for permission to redonate back to the Batavia Fire Department our 1927 Peter Persch fire engine. Thing is, 91 years of age, it's got a new engine in it, other things there's Shriners have done. And the fire department has agreed that they will take it back and use it as kind of a public relations piece and use it in parades or Windmill City Days or stuff to place to hand out in literature. So it'll be a neat little old fashioned thing to have in town. But again, you don't see many vehicles running around the streets that are 91 years of age. But we still got one here in Batavia and you'll be seeing a lot of it in the days ahead because our friends at the Batavia Fire District even appropriated a little money to have the truck repainted into its original color scheme. And we get rid of the shrine name and put Batavia on there where it was and do all the things that are out there. So a lot of people are coming together to aid in that little project. And again, it's a public relations tool for the fire department. So Alderman Brown, did entertaining motion?
Mayor, it is my understanding that some of the girls from the Batavia High School swim team, which is part of the co-op with West Chicago, hit bond to state. So you might want to-
We'll try to find out about them, too.
Okay.
You got a name you can give me or I can go out to the high school and talk about it.
I can come up with a name. I don't have it now.
All right. I'll go in and talk to Julie in the athletic department. She knows everything about everything else.